January 2023, Casco Township, Lord Cuskey, New Orleans. For city was pledged to that Flight 960.
The United States of America and to the Republic of Canada stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, welcome everybody who showed up. Thank you. The first order of business is the consent agenda. I have three items to add to the, um, the agenda. I give you each of the board members a modified agenda. First one are PM Goulart Incorporated's for the Sparks Grant Application Assistance Envoys. I have S. 2023 Annual Road Commission Meeting and T. Board Review Training.
Joe, I don't think we need the last two. I don't think we need to be on as action items. We're not voting on anything.
Okay, it's just we're gonna be for the Board Review Training spending money.
You don't know who's going though, unless everybody's going.
Yeah, we're gonna do all.
Okay, but the, the date, the meeting, we're not, we're not voting on that, so that shouldn't be an action item. It would just be FYI.
Oh, okay.
Right?
I guess so, yeah. It's just the, the time. I was gonna ask the members what time, um, the times on there. There's multiple times and that, so.
You mean for the training or the road commission?
Road commission.
Oh.
Okay. So just move that?
Yeah, I would just move it to like, um, whatever, the correspondence or whatever. Under Board Comments, you can talk about it.
All right. So Board Review Training becomes item S.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Does anyone have any additions?
No, I don't think so. I make motion, we adopt, um, the consent agenda.
Did you, uh?
With the two.
Did you get your, uh, correct, uh?
I put it down, I guess.
Okay. Okay. Move the line.
I, I make motion to approve the consent agenda, please. Support.
Okay, we have motion support to approve the consent agenda with the items added to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Oh, roll call vote, sorry about that.
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, but I'm guessing the motion is affirmative. Park update, okay. We have some items happening in here.
You have citizens' comments first.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, we have right now citizens' comment. This is on any item, um, that's not on the agenda. If you'd like to talk about an issue, you'd like to bring the court board.
I just mentioned my, and with this dirt bikes going down the road and they're doing wheelies on the street. I mean, they're coming out of property, so just call the sheriff.
Yeah, sure.
And then out of the ditches.
And, I mean, yeah, if you know who they are, I mean, that's.
I don't think you know who they are. They come from the other roads, but they come, they, they're more on those four-wheelers than they ever been, I've been near to them, like I said, forty years. It's ridiculous. They're up and down and everybody's got those ATDs and they're just up and down, up and down, and they don't care where they go.
Right, yeah.
You know, it's just crazy.
Sometimes very fast.
What?
Sometimes very fast.
Well, they're fast.
Very fast.
But now the ditches are there, they're within the ditch, out of the ditch, out of the property, and off the way, goes away. And I put no trust that inside them. When it snows, they go on the property. If they go in the pond, it's their fault. They're lying around me. So, I don't know what else you can do. And I call the sheriff, but we don't have one sheriff, so.
Well, yeah, well, they.
He's a block.
Yeah, they, if they're, there's a car available in the area, you go check it out, but sometimes you're all busy doing other stuff and.
Yeah, well, they said, the neighbor on another street on these ways said that there's a state house that goes up and down. They had some problems over there, but, you know, he just happens to know the house.
Right, right. Yeah, and we've had this before through the years with the township here, and, I mean, if you find out who they are and talk to their parents, that's one.
You're not the top of the parents. The parents don't care. Before, before, it used to be the parents were top of the parents, the kids were just, these kids don't, there's no respect. It's like I, my friend, I have a friend who was on leave and there's all kinds of stuff going on, there's still damage and everything like that. She's more, um, yeah, it's just so you know.
Right. Okay, does anyone else? All right. Okay, um, there'll be another chance at the end for citizens' comments if you wanna, um, comment there. Okay, park update, um. Later in me, we are gonna talk on phase one, we have a bid, uh, but phase two, the township was awarded, so that's gonna double the size of a parking lot and build a thirty by sixty picnic facility. We're waiting for our contract from the state to start that. We applied on December nineteenth for a DNR Sparks Grant. That's a grant I requested to pave the driveway into the park and the parking lots. That's money Sparks Grant. The first two are passport grants that you get monies from when you put that little tag on, you get the state parts and DNR whole bunches. And those monies are used to help develop, um, recreation space. It's a match grant. We have to put money out of our parks and recs plan to match it. And this Sparks Grant is a pure program. Um, they get through COVID money, so we have, we put into it to pay, um, to pay those parking lots. The first grants only cover the paid parking area with sport and handicap areas. The Sparks Grant, I wanna pay everything. And, and later, we're gonna have a, um, uh, we'll have a, uh, resolution to approve our, an updated parks and recs plan so we can apply for a DNR development grant to develop a road down back to the river. Okay. All right. Next item in the business is Resolution 2023 dash zero one, Annual Meeting Budget Hearing for March seventh, twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero one for the annual meeting and public hearing for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Support.
Okay, we have a motion support for approval of Resolution 2023 dash zero one, Annual Meeting Public Hearing for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Okay, roll call vote.
Do we have to roll call?
No, it's, I don't know.
Yeah. It says aye is in the name.
Okay.
So I don't think we have to do roll call.
No roll call, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, the first, next one is Resolution, um, two thousand twenty-three dash zero two. This is the, for the clerk salary. What it is, is the clerk is setting, is basically asking permission from the board to go before the electors at the annual meeting in March for a vote on the pay. That's what we're all doing tonight. So, um. Okay, um. Our clerk, Jennifer Anderson, is asking for, um, for an increased wage here. So forty-two thousand dollars per year plus one hundred dollars per election.
That's actually a typo to be a thousand per election.
Okay.
Sorry. But we don't have any elections this year, I hope.
Are we waiting for a motion? Oh, is that what we're waiting? Um, then I will, um, make a motion to approve. Is that the language?
Adopt.
Adopt, thank you, adopt. Casco Township Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two for the clerk's salary. Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support for the resolution for the adoption of the clerk's salary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this is, like I said, this will be, these will be officially voted on at the, um, annual meeting. That's where the electors, residents of the township, are welcome to come in for an actual get the vote. To vote to, um, to increase it or keep it the same, but you can't vote to decrease it. Okay, we have Casco Township Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero three, treasurer's salary. Treasurer Stover, she's only, um, just keeping her salary at twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and seven, four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-three cents.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash zero three for the treasurer's salary. I, I make a motion to adopt it, sorry.
Any support?
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt, we have motion support to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three, treasurer's salary. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one is Casco Township Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four, trustee's salary. This is for our trustee, um. Okay, this is, um, for Dan Goldston, and he's asking eight hundred forty-six dollars per year plus eighty-two dollars per diem per meeting.
Same as for twenty years or so.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero four, adopt.
Support.
Adopt trustee's salary.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt. Support?
Aye.
Support.
Okay. Okay, we have motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, this is Casco Township Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero five, the trustee's salary is Regina Kazinsky. She's taken up my old banner and, um, eight hundred and forty-six. Never asked for a raise in many, many years. With, um, per diem of eighty-two dollars per meeting.
Make motion to adopt Casco Township Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh five, trustee's salary.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five, trustee's salary for Regina Kazinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have Casco Township Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six, the supervisor's salary. Um, I am only requesting twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars a year, no increase.
I'll make motion to adopt Casco Township Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero six, supervisor's salary.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion support to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero six, supervisor's salary. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, next one. This is Casco Township Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven, Casco Township Recreational Plan. Last year, um, we were gonna apply for a DNR development grant. It's kind of like the big grant to help develop the park. Where our master plan, telling, um, we, we set aside like what we'd like to see the township in five, ten, twenty years from now, a part of it's a rec plan. Where our rec plan expired. So planner, she came, our planner, um, updated it, and then we did a public survey. And once it gets passed, we can send this to the DNR and, um, our rec plan will be good for five years. And then we can apply for grants and that. This gives us extra, um, just the extra, um, authority to apply for monies. The, um, the passport grants, we didn't need an updated rec plan, but for a development grant, we do. Okay.
I make a motion to approve res, to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven, um, for the Casco Township Felt River Park.
Okay.
Support the resolution.
Okay, we have, um, our motion and support to adopt Resolution adopting two thousand twenty-two, I mean, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero seven. Resolution adopting the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six park and recreation plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye-bye, motion carries. All right. Item H, accept the bid for phase, for RP twenty-one zero zero eight nine, Phase One Casco Township Felt River Park. Okay. We have a, a couple of different options here. One, we could adopt, it was Teltos Contracting that adopt, um, put in the single bid. We can adopt it to do Phase One, but Pam said there's another option. We could wait until we got, we know we, we want Phase Two. We could await for the agreement from the state for that, and we can combine both of them. They'll save us some costs, like when they do setup costs and some other stuff. If, if they did Phase One, then they had to come back and do Phase Two, you have some extra cost. So it's more effective if we bundle the two phases. Okay, you're making a motion?
Yes. I know, you, sorry, sorry, you have a question.
So this would negate Teltos' bid? This is no longer?
Well, Teltos, at least this portion of it. I mean, let me free the bid on.
Next, I don't know.
Yeah.
For the whole project.
Yeah, for both Phase One, Phase Two.
We didn't receive any other bids on this at all?
No. We had a, um, because of that, we had to get some, um, Pam had to do some explanation. I had to write letters saying, hey, we only have one bid. And they real, the DNR realized that construction is quite busy and they kind of, you know, but they still have to annotate that, and so.
So do we need to do, um, table this or could postpone this?
Well, we wrote down what options. Do we want to accept Teltos' bid for just Phase One? Or we say we go with, um, the second option where we could, um, tell, Teltos, hey, right now we're putting this on hold because we wanna bundle it. And don't be free, let's like any other construction, um, company to bid on it.
I would move that we accept option two and put it on, put Teltos' bid on hold for another round after we get funding for the rest of the park.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion and support to go with option two. That is to wait until we get our business agreement to proceed with, um, Phase Two, so we can bundle the two, um, phases, construction phases together to save us some of the, to save some of the cost.
I just wanna throw out there though, by postponing this, we're taking a chance that they won't bid on it or, you know, maybe might bid on it.
Right, well, I mean, someone eventually will bid on it. It's just, right now, it's just, we're gonna be saving costs if we go with option two.
Could, but it could come in higher.
FYI.
Yeah. It could come in higher.
Of course, it's gonna come in higher.
It could come in higher.
But also, building dries up, you could have even more people apply.
And tourist rates are up, so maybe that would happen.
Yeah. So. Okay, we have a, uh, a motion support to accept option two. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, bye-bye, motion carries. Thank you. And Teltos are, they've been in business a long time. They'll understand that, so.
And they've been in the township a long time.
Yeah, yes. It was nice, but, you know, we have to look after. Okay. Two aye, I would like to appoint Christopher Kubak, Kubak, you're right?
Kubatsky.
As an alternate for the Casco Township Zone Board Appeal, so to fill the remainder of the term of Al Ensign. Starting January tenth, twenty twenty-three and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Support.
Okay.
Did you make a motion?
No, no.
I thought you did make a motion.
No.
He can't make a motion.
You didn't make a motion.
I'll motion. Or a motion to, to appoint Chris to.
Dan just said you'd do motion and come in.
Welcome aboard. We'll see you Thursday.
Well, wait a minute, before we vote, I'm gonna make a comment. Um, Chris was one of our finalists when we did, um, um, for our council vote. But I ask you if you'd like to be on the Zone Board Appeals. It's a good board. If, I think it's what, I've served on both Plan Commission and Zone Board Appeal. Zone Board Appeals is a tougher place, 'cause you gotta tell people no.
But, um. Makes it sound like a swimsuit competition.
Chris is from the southern part of the township, and in recent years, we're, um, how, we haven't been getting as many people. And, um, luckily, some of my latest, like Sue and, um, John, um, Darren, Frank, started going on Plan Commission. I'm from the southern part of the township.
I'm a South sider.
Yeah. So I'd like to spread out the, you know, representation throughout the township on the various boards. Okay, all right, let's have a vote. All in favor of accepting, uh, Chris as our alternate to the ZBA?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And we, there's a meeting on Thursday at seven, and you, it's an administrative meeting, but you can get, um, to know the members and they can serve you.
Yes. Like John, which is your friends.
Yep. All right, moving on. Okay, like every time this year, we're gonna need to move around twenty thousand dollars for emergency road repair. It's been dry, but if it gets wet, especially when the thaw comes out the ground, the roads turn to, turn to crap. And sometimes we need to, um, go up to the road commission to get some extra money. We do this every year, so.
So I make a motion, um, to fund the emergency road project of twenty thousand dollars for this winter season.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support to, to, um, move twenty thousand dollars into emergency road plan. Okay, um, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Up to you.
Oh, Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, bye, his is motion carries. Okay, next one is purchase a lectern for the township hall. Um, we just noticed like when sometimes, when applicants are at a meeting, it kind of gets a little confusing and that. So we're gonna, I'd like to get lecterns, so whoever's present at the board should be up there. It's like a, well, point. Um, the lectern here is only a hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So moved, I'll purchase a lectern.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion support to buy a lectern for the township hall for a hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Goldston, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next one is revoke bond PBB twenty-two zero zero five zero for two hundred and fifty dollars. Brenda, do you wanna give a little bit of a background on this one?
Well, I don't have the information in front of me, so I'm gonna be going by memory. If my memory serves me correctly, this was a permit that was issued for a solar panel, panel roof mount. Uh, the company went defunct. They are no longer in business, uh, and there's no way, they paid the bond. The resident did not have any out-of-pocket cost to, to us. So basically, we would handle this as an expired bond.
Yeah.
I did speak with the resident, uh, and she has no legal recourse.
Yeah.
The people have just completely gone out of business.
Yeah, it's just not, uh, it's a lot of people around the area that's done by this.
Oh.
So, all right.
I make a motion to revoke bond number PBB two-two dash zero zero five zero and the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. I'll support that.
Okay, we have motion support to revoke bond PBB twenty-two dash zero zero five zero for two hundred and fifty dollars. Do we need to do a roll call vote for voting, okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Goldston, yes.
Kazinsky, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stover, yes.
Okay. We have a, we have a thing for a performance review was requested here, um, for, um, to update our employee handbook here. And, um, which is, I mean, it's a good thing. Uh, it has, um, excellent stuff. I guess I just have a question, um. I mean, I guess right now we have, this is fine, but we need to, what do you have, well, how the end effect?
That was just a sample I didn't want.
That was just a sample. We were gonna just discuss it, and then we also need to, we were gonna discuss, because last meeting, we talked about revising the handbook. That's why that's on there.
Okay.
We don't need that. It was more just, you know, what.
Yeah, it's, it's a good start, although I have some concerns about this type, because only, um, sometimes it, there needs to be like an end result on that. Because, um, we've seen, uh, from the Air Force, they had a very similar one, and people always max it out. So there's, um, but we're talking about this. It's a good start on, um, looking at our handbook and that, so. Okay.
When are we talking about it?
What's that?
When are we talking about it?
We can talk right now, let me try.
Okay.
Okay. I guess I would like to probably find out, I mean, this is great for correcting behavior, and I'm all for that. But, um, we have, I guess what we gotta decide is what's the end effect, how we're gonna, um, rate this system and how that's gonna, um. How, it will be the supervisor, of course, but, um. I guess we need to define this better.
That's fine, but we, what we talked about doing is because normally, if somebody would wanna raise, they would have asked in December for a raise so that it would start at the beginning of the year. So we have to figure out, because if, if one of the hourly employees wanted to come to us and ask for a raise, it's not fair to put them off because we don't have our ducks in a row for the handbook. So we need to have a game plan, I guess, and figure out if, if we work on it, everybody works on it, and we come back next month. And this is what we talked about, but it, it just seems like we just keep discussing it and moving it to the next month, and nothing gets done, so.
Discussing about discussing.
Yeah, well, let me, let me get, this is a good start.
Yeah. And that was just something Vicky found online. We didn't even make it up. It was just something to print it off.
Okay, it's a good start, and we'll discuss this more. Let me get some more feedback on this. I'll contact MTA and see what other townships been doing. And, uh, we can maybe leverage if we see anything good ideas, okay? Okay. Okay, um, hall rental for residents. Okay.
We've had quite a few people call and ask if we are renting the hall out since we redid it. So we were just throwing that out in the air to see what the board thought about renting it out to the residents.
We used to do that. Years ago, we used to rent it out. We put restrictions on it.
We don't have any restrictions, of course.
We had a guy who wanted to have his bachelor party here, and I remember way back in the days when there were graduation parties, it got quite wild.
Well, I'd say, you know, we just put no alcohol.
Right.
I mean, we have cameras, so we can see like if there's damage or something, we can see, and we just take a, a deposit in case there is damage. And we make sure we have enough liability or whatever. I.
Would that be for upstairs or downstairs?
Upstairs, yeah.
Upstairs.
Yeah, and, um, the one thing, I mean, I have, I guess I have no problem if it's stuff like baby showers or wedding showers, stuff like that.
We just don't have like a kitchen they could use.
No, so you have to know who's going to. No, we have to know who's going to open up.
Yeah.
Inspect and lock up.
Right.
So.
Then you have to have somebody clean up, so you have to charge for that.
And Nicole and Saq might have some things to say about it.
Correct, so again, I, we put it on there, so.
Of course, I could watch the national.
Well, I have to, I have to call Steve.
There you go.
That's, with Dan brought up, it's a good point, I got to call Steve Saq tomorrow, let me start there.
Okay.
And then, yeah, I have no problem for.
Just because we've had a lot of people ask, so that's why we just kind of threw it out there.
Okay.
I know.
All right.
She wanted to watch the game.
I wasn't worth watching.
Okay, now, we have spring market for the March eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and March twenty-third, twenty twenty, March twenty-fifth.
We had someone ask about, you know, how we were doing outside, like the, whatever we.
Casco's Little Sale.
Casco's Little Sale, so we thought, maybe they want to do it inside or some, I just thrown it out there, see what you guys think.
Okay.
About doing. In M J Ms?
No, it was someone that called, somebody called.
Yeah, she gave it up.
Yeah, she gave it up.
Oh, she did give it up.
Yeah, well, first, go forward, you mean, they were wanting to have it inside the building?
Well, you wouldn't have an outside.
Yeah, they wanted inside.
I wouldn't think. Oh, so they wanted to do something inside?
Like, yeah, I guess we could advertise it.
Well, that would be nice.
We could advertise it, and then if people wanted to come.
Sure, that would be nice.
What, would they be selling stuff, or?
Yes.
Yeah, a craft show or something.
Yes, a craft show.
Okay.
Unless somebody's going to bring their livestock in, and.
Well, they might leave them outside.
If you're going to do the hall, that would even make you, like, have no thunder sun, or maybe they do the crafts.
Like a, yes.
You have a place, you make something, you can't go to your craft shop.
They could, if they wanted to, but you have this point, you have this plate, well.
And I, I just threw those dates out there, too, because I figured it's kind of Easter.
Yeah.
Well, we'll put it out there, see if anybody's interested.
Sure, all right, but I'll draw the line on the gambling golden retrievers, or.
What?
No, Sue's here, but she, we had to prove the license.
They had to prove a lottery license for my golden retriever.
Yeah.
Oh, and then they go.
It, it's a basket raffle.
Yeah, I know.
It's not like a big deal, it's not, but I had to jump through all the hoops to get it for one raffle.
One raffle.
For the national that was in Michigan, which will never come back to Michigan again.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, Township Parks and Raffle Board. Yeah, that is actually one of my goals for this year, to stand it up, we had a number of people interested, like, when we did the parks cleanup and that.
Yeah.
And I want to contact them, because we need to establish an official.
Well, yeah, and especially because those, whoever's on that board can help make decisions about the park, and not, and bring those decisions, you know, the recommendations to the board, instead of us making all the decisions, have them involved.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So we have, we, we have some of our, the people that were there at the spring cleanup, and then we could start with them. I know there's a couple of people that were keen to get involved.
So are you going to contact them, and start that, okay.
Okay, the next one is project control engineering invoicing.
Okay, last year, we, or two years ago, whatever, do you remember when it was?
About two years ago.
With, when we, when we approved to have Mr. Maji, he was going to look over any of the plans that the Saint Clair County Drain Commission could not do. But now I think he's doing more than that, but there was a problem with this last invoice, so I would like to recommend, or get your input, everybody, about trying to figure out how to do this differently, because this bill is from July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and I don't know who it was that brought it in from the church.
Something from the church, Telto originally got it, it was Telto got it first.
So they came in to pay it to us last, or at the end of December, the last week of December. So it was almost six months old, and that was the first time we ever heard of it or saw it. So she paid, it was thirty-one hundred dollars, she gave us a check for thirty-one hundred dollars, and now we're giving him a check for thirty-one hundred dollars. Why are we the middle, middleman here? It should be something that goes, we have nothing to do with it, so why are they not paying him directly?
Let me get clarification from John Monte, he told me that, and I.
We already asked him, and he said this is how it has always been done, and that's not a good answer.
All right.
Because there's a lot of backend work on this, too, it's not just someone coming and giving us a check, I mean, there's a lot of paperwork and, you know, extra steps and stuff that really shouldn't happen, if they're, you know.
How, how would you prefer, would you prefer them pay you, John Monte, directly? Okay, well, let me run that by John, and we can see what you, also, John, and maybe we'll have to expand, because we, sometimes, like Steve says, to have that engineer review on a lot of stuff is a good thing, you know, John's a civil engineer.
Well, yeah, if it's something that we ask him to do, or we require, then that's different, right?
Well, the statements are addressed to Joe as supervisor, and so, though, normally,
anything that's addressed specifically to the desk, it goes to your desk.
Right.
So they didn't even know about it.
Right, so.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
So anything that's a bill or whatever needs to come to our office, so we know to pay it.
Okay, sure, okay.
Yeah, we, we need to fix that, because like I said, there's a lot of unnecessary backend work to that.
Yeah, I need to talk to John, and he weighs up on this, so, but no, John's a, I like working with him, he's a good engineer, he, he knows the area well, okay. Next one is, this is our P and L, this is for the Sparks Grant Application Assistance, so Pam routine, we worked, they worked with me, and we got applied for the Sparks Grant, hopefully, if we don't get this Sparks Grant, we have, there's two more rounds, so I'm hoping that the, the good state of Michigan gives Casco Township a bunch of ashfall, so, but they're asking for their assistance on doing this thing of, do totally for this invoice is two thousand two hundred dollars.
I make a motion to approve invoice number one-two-three-zero-two-two in the amount of twenty-two hundred dollars for Pam L.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support to approve invoice number one-two-three-zero-two-two for twenty-two, three thousand two hundred dollars, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Goldston, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, by yeses, motion carries, okay, the next one is board review training. The three board review members plus the supervisor has to get this every year. We're going to do it online right here at Township Hall on the Friday, the tenth of February. This is a mandatory, we have to have it, the training, there's a test involved, and there's a, a cost of a hundred and twenty-five dollar, a regular rate. Are we a premium subscriber for the M T A, or just regular, so it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars per person, that'd be four people. So it's like five hundred dollars?
So you need a motion to approve five hundred dollars.
Yes.
For training of four board, board review members.
Yeah, that's correct.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and support.
Support.
Okay, and we have a motion support for five hundred dollars for the, the online training for the board review members. Okay, roll call vote?
Anderson, yes.
Dan, yes.
Kaczynski, yes.
Stevens, yes?
Stover, yes.
Okay, motion carries.
You're going to sign you guys all up for that?
Yeah, yeah, so, our board board review members, we have Roger Stallone, Chris Stevens, and Jean DeLal, the supervisor, I'm required to as the court secretary for the board review, and of course, they have dates in March, they'll be public, so you could, if you want to come, you can have your, your taxes, your property tax, you can. Okay, citizens' comment, does the citizens would like to talk about any issue?
Brenda?
I don't know if this is appropriate, because not only am I a citizen, I'm an employee. And so basically, this is a citizen, but an employee comment, I need no response. This employee handbook, employee salary situation has been the most difficult thing that this board has faced in my years of employment, and it's really not necessary. Each and every one of you have your employee's best interest at heart, and we all know that. But you have more than four employees. The four employees that you see every day are here, but you have different levels of employment in many different aspects of the township. We're all employees, but hourly, contractual, professional, and so I ask of each of you, when you delve into this most delicate, difficult situation that you're going to face, but I know it's going to be difficult, it already has been, and I feel very badly about that, but all that aside, remember that you have more than four employees, and we all have different levels of expectations, but I feel that as a board, your responsibility to all of us is that you ask us to perform to the absolute best of our abilities and do our duties responsibly, and that's all I have to ask. Thank you, thank all of you.
Okay, anyone else has a comment? None, okay, we have board comments, does anyone want to bring up anything?
I just have a question, can you give us an update on the online credit card?
Oh, yeah, I got that, this is one, okay. All right, online credit card, call Richard Malone, point paid, well, about for two weeks, point paid because of the holidays, it was slow, he said he was going to place Casco in the queue, as he says, on the personal line orders, so we ought to be getting something, I'll, I'll follow up with him in a couple of weeks, hopefully he'll be here, and we can get this going. Second thing, before Bill, supervisor, Bill Rumnaff died in twenty twenty, he was looking, investigating on paving a half-mile B C road north from Marine City Highway, it's in the industrial district. We have Indian Summer and a couple other trucking firms in there right now. The county commissioner, Jeff Baum, has a lot of this COVID money that he wants to develop the Marine City Highway quarter. That falls squarely within their study area, a half mile north and south. So I'm going to request that the board of commissioners to open up, say, hey, to pave that portion as a part of that project there, I think it would be ideal for that. I was just down there yesterday on B C Road, you could see Indian Summer, they're dragging out mud onto B C Road and that, so. So, yeah, hopefully, we'll get with the idea built started, let's get that done. And the lastly, oh, any questions on that? None, okay, lastly, our sovereign out here, they're going to do a test, and we'll have to put that on the board, the message board, it will be at one P M on Tuesday, February sixth. One P M on Tuesday, February thirty-sixth, so be prepared, if you're not prepared, Casco Township has two, one route is out to Hall, and the other one by the trailer park.
We need to let these neighbors know, in case they're not online, in case whatever, that'll scare them.
I told Katie, paste, put it on the line, and put it out on. Yeah, put, yeah, and on the sign out.
Yeah, it's super loud, so, yeah, maybe we should send a letter to just, and, you know.
Okay, no, that's not a bad idea, I know that scared last summer when they're installing it.
Oh, yeah, that was loud.
Yeah.
And that was just for like ten seconds or something, yeah, it was really quick, but it was loud.
So, all right, okay.
Oh, you know, I do have a comment about that, too, there was speculation or rumor that they might be moving the one over by the trailer park, because there's already one close by on County Line, is that something?
There's one on twenty-seven mile route, it's going down there. Yeah, not too far, maybe about a half mile, I haven't heard about them wanting to move it from Americana, I mean.
Revania.
Revania, the trailer park, I haven't heard that, I will talk to our gentleman of emergency management and see. And where are they moving it, I mean.
I just, I think it would have been nicer to have it, because originally, I thought we were going to have it at our park up there, and that's at the, you know, northern eastern part of the township.
The only thing with the park is they would have to bring electrical service into there, and that would be additional cost to them. We're here, the electrical service right here, and they did Long County Line, so, but I'll call them and see what they's thinking, so. Okay, all right, if there's nothing else, we're up for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn, some, some support.
Okay, we have a motion and support to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.